I plead with allegiance to the line of the United States of America, and to the right knowledge for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
I literally had a nightmare the other night that I could not remember the words that were spoken. But yeah, and frozen. Well, I'm glad that you're clear, Commissioner. Any additional agenda items for this evening? Very none. I want to give a version from Doc and Agenda today.
I'll move.
Second.
Uh, discussion. I was a favor. Any opposed, if you care. Travis, from what I understand, you wanted to present some school finance info.
True. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so this is a, I mean, every year, while our school is supposed to be sharing a panel with Congress every year, the business manager, you're going to come around the state, it's either puts a different kind of presentation on, usually every year, some years not. Um, so this year, this was the theme that we want to present. Um, this was presented by Taylor's Law, where he says, so, around this. Um, so this is kind of a high level picture of just some things that we'd like to make school board members aware of. Any, any other individuals for that matter. So I'm, I'm not going to read through this line by line. I'll just kind of bounce around and go through the different slides. But if you have questions, stop me. So that's just what I kind of talked about. These are kind of the topics that we'll kind of touch on. You see, it's funding models. Now, everything relates to school finance, basically, but at a very high, high level. Um, I'm sure everybody's heard of the easy external cost adjustment. Um, this should, this is supposed to be done according to the courts on an annual basis in between the recent recalibration. They recalibrate the funding model once every five years. Um, and it has not been done consistently. Hence, the reason for the lawsuit that I'm sure you've all heard about. Some years get it, some years get half of it, some years they take some of it back from previous years. Very inconsistent. And that's applied to four different indices within the model, professional staff, non-professional, supplies, materials. A funny note, this year's ECA is easily proposed, energy is a little percentage. And it's a negative six point two eight percent. So pretty significant. Although energy is very small, a piece of the model, so it's, I mean, it affects it, but not like, sorry. They increase, ECA's increased base teacher in the funding model. This is currently at forty thousand, six thirty two, which you all know, you don't pay. Our starting, starting teachers are forty thousand, closer to fifty thousand dollars. See, they also increases raised for classified. We're in a situation where our ADM is dropping, so ECAs can help cushion that. But even with it, some sort of EC can still, is probably because of very, well, it's better. Health insurance, so this is a very commonly used form of, but they have what's called the health insurance. It's positive within the model. That's based on numerous reports that Carol provides to the state, that I provide to the state, based on our staffing levels, the number of staff that take different categories of our health insurance. And it's average down in the state, but it's all based on what the state wants. So it doesn't have any effect on that. Another thing to kind of keep in mind, we heard, um, ECA for staffing in both categories is eight and a half percent. This doesn't equate to an eight and a half percent raise, but there's a lot of different components and things that go into the funding model itself. For this, and then, like I just mentioned, our ADM went to use to drop, so you have to take some of that percentage. One thing to remember, it's a funding model, it's not a spending model. A lot of legislator, legislators, like, yes, whether it model, it's allocated, because that's a charity, your local control, because each school is different. It's a funding model, it's not a, not a spending model. As you all know, the main driver is ADM. Pie size is the pie size. What we get in our general fund is what we get. It doesn't get anything here just because we want to spend our hiring of teachers or increase salaries, I'd smoke it out. I kept mentioning flexibility is key, each district is different. New students, new, new staff, that's what you guys all know. We've continued to lose ADM per, our last classes, coming to twenty twenty. Last check, ADM was close to three hundred, just a question.
So one example that flexibility grabs, if I'm wrong, is the mix of, you know, how many actual teaching staff do we have versus how many parents, for example. Right? I mean, that's, that's one way of seeing that funding model. Great differently from the district.
Correct.
And it's, it's all the matter, right?
We have to report the, often state-based salary, regional teacher, what can do. But it's a pie as it's a big, you have to adjust for somewhere else to get that.
I have a question about the indices that were mentioned on the very first slide. So why would?
This, this one?
Yeah, so why can they? I, I just don't get the negative indices as part of it, or a negative ECA, and why would they not apply to all four sectors each time? Who's the driver at the state level who decides on that negative energy?
State, state.
Okay, but which committee?
So it starts with.
Pulling this one?
So, so in the summer, in between sessions, they have, it's called the Joint Education Committee. Periodically throughout, they have consultants that come in that provide all these reports showing different effects of where each ECA applies nation-wide statewide. So they take recommendations. Questions. And they, the JEC comes up with a recommendation, they want to take consult recommendations, they want current background, they want to increase, they, that joint education community comes up with those figures. And then they provide a recommendation to joint corporations. And then joint corporations, they decided they wanted to create a new district, like those recommendations. And then whatever the JEC comes up with, medicals, the body, the rest.
So when, so when one ECA comes up negative, as is the case with energy, then it's up to that individual district to leave their little piece of pie and figure out how to accommodate and buffer those variables. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to, just to recap what happened in those joint, those inter committee, it's education, they recommended a potency of appropriations also already went into the potency of. But since then, the elections changed several of the seats and committee memberships. So I don't know if that's going to be the thing in sessions, personally, in this one.
I'm wondering if it will change or just.
It changed.
Yeah. I thought I'd read it, I'd read it to you. The words, I think.
Yep.
So continuing on, um, there's also a lot of things that you guys as a board choose to fund that aren't necessarily funded through the, on the plot. For instance, any district that has issues, as you all know, food service is not good. We help food service out every year, like probably mainly only side group insurance, and everybody has coverage. They're not giving any resources to, to fund those. That one of these things, who, who does not fund them, are audits, very low. Audits that we, that we go through every year, we don't, we don't, but we're, I don't know. Do that, so. There's kind of a theme here of local control. Guys, we cherish that, we fight for that. Um, as far as like reducing to, for, for general funds coming down, there's always, there's only so much room to cover, out of supplies, materials, purchase services, that kind of stuff. And I know the last several years, we've been using, building budgets in those categories to refine, out for, to do this. And so to give or want to be, it's back. Let's start with lip glosses or trish them, something.
We're behind in terms of our budget, only eighty percent showed roughly, seventy percent.
So I haven't touched on this a little bit, but we can understaff, we can overpay. Like one option, obviously two, staff right on, payroll. I'm thinking of our staff, we, you know, starting teacher, moving those salary back, close to ten thousand, I think, we should, overstaff.
So where do you see us then, on that scale?
On that scale?
You have to be sure of you.
I would have to say require pushing options to.
Priority is priority D.
I mean, but that, like I said, it's all matter, right, work, right, which you guys want to do.
Which is kind of where it came, where, where it was going out with the parents, right? I mean, that's the way that you can overstaff while still keeping your, your salaries a little bit higher because you pay parents as much as you're doing for a teacher, but you can still get some educational benefit and help with the teachers. And that's a priority we've decided as districts that we do, I, we can change that, and I don't know if that's the right priority, but that is certainly really important.
Looking back at, you know, when I say closer to options, I mean, but if you really look at, okay, just mention, the base salaries aren't at, for like this kind of fund, so we can more above, but I think we can deal with that.
You could say they're overpaying for the funding model.
Really?
Reality of the market is not at forty thousand for the base salary, no mystery. Nothing like this, you can't find a base rate for a starting teacher. Every district is overpaying because that's what you have to do, attract candidates. It's just how much over that you go.
So I'm intrigued that in fact that many districts do this, option one, party D. So when you're talking with other business managers at this meeting, what are, what are people saying about their situations? And if many districts do this, what is their perceived?
But, I mean, like I said, it's, it's just priorities, which you, you, it depends. Ireland's, you know, it's, kids. Education costs, which comes with different elements that look into that.
I don't have friends. So the legislature said years ago, for kindergarten through grade one, a student to staff ratio of sixteen to one. Districts don't all do that. Some of the larger districts go, well, we're going to have twenty five to one. So they're, they have, they've been funded for a certain number of K three teachers, let's say. They don't have that number. They pay the few, the fewer that they have, they pay them all. Because the class says, so we keep both the model. So they, they, they can do things like that, try to remain more competitive on the costs, on the, on the salary side. But still need the needs of students extensively, even though they're not following the district parameters of the model. And that's how it wrote for legislators. They say, well, we could be money for sixteen to one. And then they look at the staffing data on six oh two, and it says, well, this district's salary is twenty five to one, sixteen to one. They go, will you agree to see off? And then you have this dialogue, these, these legislative legislation, let us move on to the other part. But they're still funding.
Yeah, that's a good, good question. Now, I may be wrong, because I get so confused about some of this, but didn't the Supreme Court, a while back, say that it had to be a cost-based law with the legislature does, right? So when we're looking at a market price of P two D, say sixty thousand average, but cost-based law. We're, we're talking, so let's say competitive fifty, but the cost, but, but their law says forty. Where's the rub there? Why are, where's the, are they not looking at a cost base anymore? Is that what the lawsuit has concerned with this? You have the mail right on your head, that's, that's majority of the, okay, some of these, these, um, on numbers, you know, like, or cost, but that's, it's, those numbers are two thousand five. And they just haven't kept, kept up with the times to keep a true cost-based law.
And is this universally same formula for every district in the state?
Yep. And we need its complicated care, right? Because, uh, we'll talk about people leaving and not staying here, the families, people moving, living wherever they want to go. Is it because they can't afford to live here?
No, they live in over ten.
Right? That their kids are now younger and we lost, right?
We'll be real to you, you can't go to the agency.
And the one thing to keep in mind, you know, everybody talks about how much a one child costs. In our district, average around fifteen thousand dollars, but the actual average, each student, again, is not changing. Average throughout the model, but a lot of people are looking at that, they'll print some thirty three, it says, great healing. So the funding is based on ADM, which we mentioned. Um, it's, that's either a three-year loan average or the ADM of the prior year, they listened to one thousand five. And maybe on downwards salary, which we're rolling down. Well, this is kind of a, a hot topic for business managers. Um, cash reserves, so currently we're allowed to keep thirty percent of our budget in research. However, that thirty percent is set to sunset of June thirty of twenty twenty six, and it reverts back to fifteen percent. Which should have several years, they increased it due to, of all the COVID going down. So we would all like to see it stay at thirty percent. And in the years past, in the recent years past, there's been legislation towards it, but now it's not, seems to be so. So currently, it's still set to sunset of twenty twenty six. The reason we need that funding is for the items listed on your C, cash flow throughout the summer, not getting our foundation. So we're still a little bit of the tax, you know, the, the calendar. We have buses, we have special education expenses. You know, we, we have the cash flow, we're paying, we're all on reversible basis. We spend the money out, which we have to cover somehow, and we just go to the state. Means we're going to be back into the economy, so. Those are some of the reasons why. And then, and it's actually a recommendation by everybody's auditors in the state.
What have been the arguments against it?
I thought it was that they just don't want districts over there with poor auditors.
That's not, I mean, it sounds like it's kind of anticipatory, safe, key there.
Well, in my opinion, we don't need a percentage of all of them. All of them is to, to keep kids, and for all of them is to be a little bit more responsible. I mean, my just experience, expensive.
Yeah.
Arguments, I've heard, they were recently specified, they continue to sell as a gift, we can afford to save that much, we shouldn't be getting it that much. That's the thing, some, some legislators, you're being voted made by the state, you don't need it.
It worries.
Someone, but it's, you guys. But it's really just a cash flow. I mean, that's what you're doing. You're not increasing in your, your amount, the amount of legislation by addition.
And you'll just go purchase in a box or something in the center.
Literally just cash flow as you.
Yeah.
Social control.
Right. And it's, it's super important, you know, from my experience in special education, those placements can be so expensive. One year at a residential treatment center, for example, can be forty million dollars for one school. Not counting extends, we're selling ones, so long to. So you don't have that kind of money sitting around in your special education budget, and you've got eighty percent of that in staffing and such.
But you won't have it here.
You have to have it here, else you just can't do some hotels, you have to.
Now, I would agree with the argument, if it said that every year we could put thirty percent of our budget in, and that amount goes by thirty percent over a year. That's like saying, yeah, it should be reduced in school by twenty percent, but that's not what it says. It currently considered about twenty three percent.
And depreciation reserve, is that safe right now, or is that?
I don't know, I don't know if you need, I just, uh, trying to open the, I don't know, has, years, years move, or. Never use that money to increase our, our year of opportunity. It's not, that's without. So this is what Jared just mentioned, there's two different, um, special reserve funds that school districts can create. Both through, you know, through equipment, appreciable items, or, or school building. We, in this district, we established a depreciation reserve account. We established the depreciation reserve, we can put up to ten percent of your, um, own, uh, the general fund into that on a, so the, the first year we established, we put a chunk into that reserve. Going forward, it just depends on what we follow, at the end of the year with a budget. Um, so, and, and the, the thing is, it saved the general fund some expense over the years, it's established. It bought desks, chairs, put in new sidewalks, was it the new floor that, you know?
Oh, yeah.
And equipment?
Yeah, and equipment, yeah, we'd use it for several hours that normally would come out of general funding. Could afford to spend it. And currently, right now, in our depreciation reserve, um, talking to the. Um, student activities, so you have funding to, to the model to use. And however, I don't think there's a district or the state that doesn't spend more than what they get through time, in the case of time less, are, this current year, we're receiving nine hundred fifty three thousand. Their total activities, which is middle school, high school, coaches, equipment, all that stuff, is low for one part one. And their D, it's a, it's a part of our district, I mean, activities, we want, we want. This part we'll discuss. This just kind of talks about, um, the legislature's service office. You guys receive from time to time, stuff confused, the legislature, the model is going to be this amount, that's. Their estimates are based on a lot of assumptions, it's not live, able. So we, we don't put a lot of merit into their information. We have, we have the tools to estimate it early, precise, I mean, it's always, everything can change at the, at the moment. The hell is wrong, so we can get pretty close. On the checks and balances and the additional reports, that you have to see that our audits, our, about it. Had a couple of different audits that they were doing, period, I don't really. So I mean, we get checks, what's really working. That's, that's.
For, for. I have one, what, for our budget, what's the makeup of property taxes?
Um, sorry.
Can you guess? I mean, are we talking, like five percent, fifteen percent? The, the reason I'm asking is that there's a push right now to slash property taxes in that process state legislative way. And I think most people in the state don't understand, the property taxes don't go shown in. They go directly into the school districts, um, quarters. And that's a lot of how we, on teachers, I mean, eighty percent, yes. If we cut that down, that means, based on what you just said, that we can't cut much else. Those are actual teaching positions that will be, or staff positions that we put at, right?
Well, depends, because I think with some of these property taxes, we need to know this. There's a lot of talk of somehow the state's going to have to back those, but I've seen, I've heard that discussion. Because you're exactly right. And such, that's, that's. Should be more.
That is, this is a broader question of board, but what is our relationship as a board or a district with the legislature? Do we, does the board, because the legislature's decisions have huge impact on what we do, I was curious. Are we allowed to speak or advocate with any sort of?
Yeah, definitely, I mean, they they represent our equally intentions, which is us. Just because we work for the local government, it doesn't matter that compact or you know, those board members a lot of times have more. Uh of an impact because we're elected and the same people are elected them. Um so it's just how much energy do you want to give it? How much time you have, could you could you make those phone calls and come to the legislative forum or? Uh email exchange with these folks despite their discussions. Uh but yeah, absolutely, there's some districts where that is a lot of what's super technical during winter. Those are small districts mostly, but that's and like why it's a potential association. We're always talking about bills and legislators, how to block it.
So on February second, third, there's the WSB legislative forum, right? So you you go out and and that's a great place to have discussions, discussions in one of. One comment, the other comment is there's two ways I think we can go about it, we can as individuals talk to legislators about. And not all of us are going to see, I I have issues that would take her important, right? So those are great ones for us to talk to them and do. Another way we can do it is say as a board. If we want, if there's something that we feel important, let's say it's the property tax. If that is a board, we can say uh we're we're drafted in a collective to these groups or collectively task. Um that probably doesn't look like. So we can always do that.
I think about just your comment earlier and who were talking about this last session, we have a totally new legislature. Hopefully they do great things for schools. Yeah, just keeping that in our mind, though. What is our role in communicating, to get the support of our students, we need.
One thing I would say, especially this. Will change the discussion. But there's, there's a couple, there's two things that are standing regularly as. One is huge change downstairs. Second one. After this year, already they're going to start the recalibration process after this. History has told us that. Uh let's just allow this to be a correction. And then another, another factor model is. So one of the ladies that's on here, she does a great job. She knows this legislative term so very, she's. Chose her everything. Comes to. Right, I can't share with you guys just. That you guys are helping us. I would encourage you to go through this and just, I mean, she explains contents.
Anything else?
I think Jared, she said we were down three hundred kids from twenty four.
So eighty one.
Eighty one. So what was our school population, what is it now?
Fifteen fifty.
Fifteen fifty right now?
Thinking twenty, when we end in the year.
So that's losing that that many kids in the last. Three years, so um is it mini nutrition?
Yes, we, yes. Yes, we have, we have reduced staff. Nutrition, we don't have to do a reduction in work. Um or just. Separated positions, other than parapositions, we have a little bit of several parapositions. But as far as certified staff, it's all nutrition. That's what we're hoping, that's what we're grateful you all passed by, we have implications cited. That implications going out this week. And then by February fourteenth, we'll know that any of those positions that are vacated can just basically be vacant. In short term, while. That's the best way, I think, to break this spending on staffing down right now. Tell people, hey, you're going to do one of this less few people. You're not going to be lost in this class anymore.
And that trend was to continue, right? Decrease. Isn't, you know, it's a short term model, you don't want to get very good and you know, lose good sound, right? But if it looks like it's going to be contained one trend, that's kind of almost.
Wasn't it last year that the data came out that the number of um candidates was down eight point five percent statewide? And I don't know what birth rates are like, but I know the powers that be are tracking.
You know, the weird thing, weird thing about the data in our district is our kindergarten classes last week was really strong. Yes, a couple of our large, I mean, they're they're our largest classes.
Who have these little models who.
Our current kindergarten, current first grader, about one hundred and twenty kids, we have other grade levels that are barely ninety. So maybe that's a good thing, but I don't know how many of them will stay in the district's third, fourth grade. Seems to be a lot. Middle school and about really got smaller, that's where the. Traction is really low as well, but high school still be strong. Yeah, peak is down like four hundred and fifty, I think, at that long, it was almost six hundred. If you look at your board, which. Based on what we, what we're funding for.
So have you, as an admin team, spent much time looking at where that contract or why that contract is happening? I mean, are we using kids through. You know, homeschooling, private schools, virtual families.
Yeah, yeah, they're they're typically not dropping out, but I I'd have to find that report, but I'd say to you guys.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, mine isn't great either, but Carolyn and I were going to find out, we looked at that, kind of what happened with. Ships and things like that with students. I don't think that, but listen, I think that my own impression of it just, just. It gets harder and harder to support a family. When your kids get older, they 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 also want to flow the beam. With the cost of everything, we're getting so torn in with people, houses, groceries, tollies. I think one advantage that previously trying it when their kids are younger, the economic opportunities are here and they go, well. We can't do this anymore. That's my guess, um for at least a lot of the kids that suits out.
So may not even necessarily when the kid, the kids should be saying, oh, I'm going to go to school, they may.
That's my impression, I think, if you look at land's competition figures. Overall population looks pretty stable, I don't know, we have about seven thou- seven thousand people in the manner. But families, residents of families, that's that will be changed, if there are fewer families, fewer families with children. A lot more retirees and single people. And it's just changed all the demographic, people just don't. So all that stuff, those are economic factors that have changed the composition of our student population.
Did the business managers group talk at all about ESAs? Has those been a topic of conversation at all, the educational? Accounts that pull out of the general fund, I mean, so twenty million was allocated for this year?
No, there's not, there hasn't been a lot of time, lost time to do a lot of that. I mean, when you ask me a question about this, does it ever affect us? In the short term, I would say no, but in the long term, that would really take off. We're, I gotta pull these somewhere. Foundation.
But we currently have enough buffering mechanisms in terms of our funding model.
The other thing with ESAs is that they are capped, they're starting families income. Yeah, so it's not like anybody just reflects money, legislature would pay better, right, it's more age. You make a bonus or cut off the member size of town, you're not eligible for a fund.
I think it's been openly stated by a lot of legislators that they would like to change those caps.
That's a constitutional issue, though, they would need an amendment to grant that. The other issue is just the supply of credit school options. We have a couple of manner, but most school districts don't have credit school options. Well, there are several in larger towns, of course, but like here we have a couple. And so my my just basic economics, my guess is if there's more money available from the state for families that want to choose that option, even if they're eligible. Cost of that option will increase. Now, there's more money available, so say maybe I charge ten thousand as a credit school. If I know I can count on new families getting more than that, because of the money they're going to get from the state, cost is probably going to go up. Sometimes when things like that get subsidized, the prices of the consumer shows up. So my guess is that a lot of places or Florida folks who think that they're going to have this big benefit from the ESA, maybe surprised when the prices. Rise in that service.
I learned, um, you had, when you were talking about the whole region, in a lot of ways, that's just a great motivating factor, like this for better.
Yeah, it's like any other enterprise or business, wanted to be competitive, competitive, you can't really afraid of challenges to the quality of the product, you just got to get that, you know.
Well, that's a great segue to goal setting, how we make our district.
Could be.
Students want to stay here. The raise teachers want to stay here.
Could we, before we say, before we move into that, can we take a five minute break? A four for everyone, because I want to take about a three minute break regardless of who you take.
Yeah, I have a request, the only chat source someone watching answers, it's the first day I remember the year. Yeah.
It's a pretty cool group. The state couldn't couldn't strip out that fifty, sixty percent. I mean, they couldn't let them do that, so they have to make it up. So we push, we push the property tax program onto the state. That's what that functionally does. And at some point, when the, when the minimum rent is dropping, that then will not be the minimum. I mean, that's the, that's the attitude that it drives, I think. When I'm representing these property taxes, I was saying about first.
They're gonna do that really, you know, that really.
Word of the year.
Or something else gets good. Yeah. Make everyone stealing Lincoln Street.
Okay, so the next session, board priorities and goal setting, I think we can probably roll into the next and same thing. I don't have any preconceived notion as how to do this. In the past, what we've done, I don't know if it's the same kind of thing we're gonna do. Formalize, one of those things where someone brought a whiteboard over and we all mentioned things that are top on our list. I don't know, down on there and basically we all had three or four sticky notes and we can vote on it. And at the end of the night, seeing, oh, this is world priorities live, one more. That worked, it worked really well when we had the entire admin team here and maybe overkill when we made that few other segments. But beyond that, it's had an open session to talk about the upper priorities. I think it was a little bit easier, actually, when we had the admin team here because we got to listen to what we had. So the problem is really word, we don't have it here, so. I guess it's more about, you know, what Mike and Travis can can represent the admin and what we as board members.
Well, I I guess I'll just throw this out here. It's pretty apparent in the number of bills that are likely to be proposed to this upcoming session. We've got ten or around eight during the different election candidates to stay up this past year. There's a now going on around public education. Is it worth spending more dollars on public education? It seems to be based on, are we gonna spend money on this or not? Because people are upset with outcomes, in some cases rightfully so. Wyoming, I believe, a lot less so. Actually, our outcomes in Wyoming, we can use like the APAS, one hundred percent, we outperform all of the increased rates. So we're always trying to be better, but this notion that public education in Wyoming is somehow terrible is one that needs to be pushed back on. It's odd, or a little odd, not odd, but awkward, administrators and teachers be back there on it, because it's like, well, you're pat yourself on the back. But if there's a way for this community to, community to recognize the the strength of the public school system, how we have very problem. And to support that versus to not be shy about promoting the good things that we've done and to be realistic about the goals that we need to achieve and learn to continue improving. That can be really, really beneficial. I think a lot of times speaking for administrators, well, they're not, they're not here. It feels like you're you're fighting a wave of, of mistrust and public or abuse in some cases. Articles in the, in the media about the public education and how ours failed, why we need all these charter schools, why we need more private school options. Why we should reduce barriers to anything but public education. I'm not naive enough to note that there's no, that there are, there are some serious problems that we have to tackle. Because we've gotten on track and mission, right? Mission, I think, is an honorable one. I think it's a, it's one that this state thought was important enough to put into the constitution. And the results, when you compare with other states, you compare with the undergraduates, the post-graduates, which we could collect more information about and share the stories of success for our former students. When you look at all that information, I think it's hard to come up with an conclusion, public education. And Wyoming, more specifically, Fremont one is in need of, you know, demolition on a breakbeat. So brought down a pain. That's just my, my thought, and back to look at the land scheme.
So are you saying that we don't, we don't do enough promotion on our side? For when you're talking about having that emotion and putting up, putting like good ones or what kids are doing and have been, putting that out there and saying productive?
It's a good part, yeah. Product versus the results of what we're, our budget is millions and millions of dollars. People look at the sticker and they go, what's that give us? You know, if they knew more about what our students were doing, not only about their in-school, but after school, they'd think we could combat some of that in this recession, about students' family.
And that's kids that have gone on to college and there's also the kids who are, trans school kids and there's kids that run, who start their own businesses and start their own gigs. So there's, there's a lot of awesome stories about kids in the state and, and, and Landry, they're amazing. With, it's a tough message with, with no offense to our media, it's your, you know. The negative tends to get attention, right? I mean, the, the comments about Fremont, Fremont twenty-five that were recently in the paper and how they're doing poorly with white dollars. That gets a lot of headline when you do really well in the relative. You tend not to get as much favor, right? So it's, it's a harder message to sell that positive than, which sounds crazy, right? But it's a harder message to sell positive than to, to when the negative comes out. So we've got a lot of work ahead of ourselves, I think, to try and sell the positive, that's about it. We do have a lot of great things, you know, great successes. And I think that it's important that people in the community remember the successes.
How do we? How do we, like, as a board, because most of us are board members, how do we build that transparency, communication, trust with the public? What is our role in that? Cause I think there's also, there's just mistrust of politics in general, unimportant mistrust, sometimes involved. Can we do things better as a board to? I mean, it's on the public to educate themselves too, but it's for people to get into. You can participate in this process, you can find information here.
I do that a lot at work. You know, we have this very, like, politically neutral work environment where we're not really supposed to talk about anything spicy. But I often talk, I, when I talk about myself, I tell people when I'm on the local school board and people often say, do you wanna talk about it? And it's like, sure, you know, and I've looked so many people in the eye and said, you know, like, we have cutting-edge literacy instruction. If I have a kindergartner in Fremont County School District Number One, I would be so thrilled right now. People are like, what? What does that mean? So I think we can take all of those opportunities, you know, at that level to begin those conversations. It's like all the conversations you had if you were campaigning. People are really interested. And I think that, that's a really important example. Say, hey, I'm one of the publicly elected officials, sure, while I do pass a range of motion on your shoulder, I will launch. I have a captive audience, though, so maybe that's.
Just like spotlight of graduate. I love, I mean, I really like that. You know, maybe, I mean, I don't think it would be that much out of our budget to, you know, once a week or twice a month or something, wanna tell a story and just highlight one of our great successes, our recent successes of graduates and say, hey, here's what FCSD Number One is, is, is doing for our kids. Here's the great things that our kids are accomplishing because they've gone to our schools.
I would have to go along with that. That is the point, that you graduate and you do something successful, productive, whatever you need to choose.
Yeah, and it's gotta be, it can't just be accomplishment, I mean, it's gotta be, raise the board, be with your kids, whatever. But I mean, I think that would be pretty cool, you know.
That would be really cool if we could do that and tie that, that, we can constantly organize it by graduation class year or something like that and keep it going. And let people, other members of the board nominate even potentially, you know, we recognize one or so for me here. Oh, and you guys wanna do for fourth number potentially. But then they can also be submitted by former teachers, you know, graduate themselves, who matter? It's the same, I went to lander schools and what, this was the foundation that enabled me to go on through that.
I mean, how many people in this room graduated from lander schools? I mean, that's pretty, that's a lot, you look at, you're all so respectable.
You know, Mark, I started this whole newspaper club in middle school. We talked about it in his cafeteria, now she's.
I would call it the jungle telegraph. I don't remember the name.
I think that's much more like decidedly less on. I think stuff like that, I think that if, you know, one of the tricks to getting, getting people to really see what your school is doing, what your, what your organization is doing, is are they engaged in some aspect of what we do, right? And, and sometimes that takes an invitation to get people to come and, and participate. Sometimes it's a little bit more advertising than what a person likes to put out there. And a little more, because perhaps the media that you use to try and get folks aware and inform, whether it's a wrestling matches or a basketball game. When I stepped away from teaching, it's like, ah, you should know what this game like. But I did.
So we ever had, like, a calendar of events?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm, to be known with the most calendar. skills and those kind of things, right? But I am good with the radio, if I hear it on the radio, you know, if I can read it on the radio, I hear it real good. Which is fine, it's radio. But there's still a lot of those that are, are doing stuff and, and traveling, going, doing their thing. But, you know, folks like to know what's going on in their community, like most of our, our schools. And they really think, you know, they like going to our events for the most part. And, and, and not just, not just the athletics and everything, when you look at the crowd that the play brings.
Oh, yeah.
Over the moon, right? And.
Standing room only type.
Make sure people, maybe they need to do two performances or more, you know, get the rest down to come to school. So I, I think that folks like seeing the positive stuff that our kids do and, and like seeing the positive stuff that, that our coaches are doing. They like to see the positive stuff that the teachers are doing and the adults that are involved in making the kids have the opportunities that they have. I mean, I told Maestro, one of, one of the former kids I worked with, we worked really hard, got that kid sent to OSU by the, with the help of a loan from here and, and another former student. And that kid goes through in four years and then decides she's gonna get her upper level degrees and she takes a look a few places. And the one who says, how about we just skip the master's thing, go straight through the doctoral program? As I said, that work for you? She said, yes. I mean.
Yeah, she just graduated from the NHS about five years ago, then four years in the board.
There are a couple of things on my list that I think relate to this. One, we're. And you started to that this, but I feel like the elephant in the ring during the election was this sentiment that our school board is divisive. You know? Whether or not it's divisive, whether or not we care if the public thinks that, I think that's where having a conversation about what is our process? Probably, and I think disagreement is great, that's very powerful, to have disagreement. But what, what is the role model we are setting as board members to the public? Do we feel good about how this board functions? If we do rate, if we don't? Are there changes we need to make? Is the public correct? Are we divisive? Do we care what the public thinks? That was kind of one note I had of, and not from a sentiment of pointing fingers or blame, but of what is, what is our process? And how do we convey to the public of, hey, your schools are in good hands. We have a board that is like, you know, people, like, obviously, because I think we are, like, we all are deeply invested in our schools. And going door to door, that was not always the sentiment I got. And so how do we not just restore faith in the schools themselves, but in us as? Which I think is really hard, I think restoring faith in politicians in twenty twenty-four. Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know if other people have thoughts about that or if.
I think the nature of the board, particularly the school board, often is to tackle subjects that are difficult and that we don't all agree on.
Yeah.
And I think that comes across often as divisive.
Right.
And yet those are, those are issues that we, we do need to tackle. And I think we can't shy away from those kinds of topics.
Yeah.
But we do, we're doing this service, I think, to our constituents. I do like, for example, some of the things that Mike has been doing in terms of, at the beginning of every meeting, all of a sudden, we have this big shift, we start recognizing the great things that people are doing across the district. You know, teachers and kids and some of those, those recognitions, and I think that is incredibly important for us all to come together and recognize those kinds of things and say, that's really important. The other thing is I love the conversation we're having tonight because so often as a board, we necessarily have to focus on problems. Right? We have problems in the district and we need to tackle those as a board. So very often, it always seems negative and I think the public gets the impression that it's all negative because that's what hits the guts.
Yeah.
So part of that, I think, part of it is back to the first conversation with that, which is we need to proactively put out the things that are positive that people is doing that aren't necessarily the positives. But, and they need to get covered too. I mean, you know, they don't get, the good stuff doesn't get much, too much service from anybody. Like, except for the folks right there who do some part of that.
Yeah.
And when we get the reports from, from everybody that goes to the schools and see the amazing, cool stuff that our T P D, our kids are doing and that kind of stuff. And every season, we, never see that front of it. I'm probably in politicians. I mean, cause that's the cool stuff. I mean, that's, we're on the board of record, right? We're not, didn't run so we could have fights bigger.
Yeah.
Okay, every person that ran for school board who's liked it for our permission wanted to be on the school board to be able to help and be an asset to the school district, an asset to our community and an asset to our childrens. It's that simple. It shouldn't be, I mean, people, or you disagree on how that happens sometimes? Sure. But it'll be that same thing, doorlight.
Did you put this, could you get it on?
Kill me.
Well, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I think everyone's intentions are really great. I think when I got on the board, I expected there would be more nuanced conversations. And I think my ask of the board, and I'm sorry, Taylor and Scott are, you know, but my ask of the board would be then that people really come, all of us, all the time, as much as we can, with our listening ears on. Because I think sometimes we don't have very nuanced conversations because we have such. um, strong belief systems, and that's the biggest challenge of this. It's like, who's the best, you know, possible school board person? Is it someone who's very opinionated or is it someone who's very open minded or? Because all of us come with our own worldviews and pushback bits, but I think it's, it's disingenuous to say, oh, I'm representing my constituents. It's like, aren't all of the constituents all of ours? And don't we owe all of these people who entrusted this special part of running their schools um, to us to really, um, listen and try to understand what people think? Because sometimes I feel in certain conversations that have, that don't have underpinnings, that we're not always, we're kind of going, yeah, this is all good, but that's not what I believe, so I'm gonna just.
Sometimes that's some, some way people's constituencies, opinions and beliefs. We have to be able, we have to be able to walk across the line too, and be able to talk to the folks maybe you don't really normally talk to. And then sometimes that's difficult for you.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's part of, of any public servant is you have to be able to have the the fortitude to be able to have a sensible conversation uh, with people that are not in the political realm of things, but just common folks that are doing their thing, disagree with some things that are maybe you, you say it or don't say. Right, how can you say, how can you say that? What are you sore about? You know, and you, and you have the topic and, and, and through the discussion, sometimes they find out that not as big a deal as you can, but, but people do get elected by their constituents. And, and they're, and they hopefully get to represent those folks and, and, and then the entire system. I think it's, it takes an effort to do that. I mean, it's important, it takes an effort, and it takes a little bit of courage about there to stick your neck out the places you don't feel welcome in that, or you know that you're being a little boy, here he comes again, brace yourself, cause you're right. And, you know, well, well, happy about that.
Well, I think we all feel that way, I'm just saying that I think we, I mean, I totally agree with you cause I think we've all felt like we've kind of stuck our necks out in public meetings to make comments and say things. I just think that we, we could be better at listening and not always coming in with our minds made up, is that possible? Does that make sense?
Which, it doesn't even mean you have to change your quote, it just means you.
Yeah.
Consider.
I will say this, I don't disagree with what you're saying, right? Do you think that listening to folks, um, is always good? Um, it's always important to get a better, more well-rounded view of what you're, what you're listening to, what the topic is. Over the last six years on board, I can tell you the experience I've had is that even when you do, you can spend a lot of time, you can my boy, especially with C K A, we spent a ton of time in listening sessions and that kind of stuff, right? No matter how much you do then, you're going to eventually cast a vote. And regardless which way you cast that vote, the side you vote against will tell you, they didn't listen to you. Every time. That's just part of the deal, so you have to kind of get a little bit hardened, unfortunately, to that, that perspective that comes across from, from the public. Um, you're always gonna make one half happy and the other half who just didn't listen.
Actually, I'm naive enough to think there's gotta be a different way.
We need to vote on something different next month.
I guess I would think too, like more, like the transparency with us too, like what's a priority? For us personally and what are we wanting out of a policy? Like, what's your, this is my line, I want this in the policy at least. Okay, what do you want in the policy? Like, how do we compromise and get everybody's opinion in there? Because we all represent people, right? We all have an opinion, and so if we don't take all those opinions and considerations, we're ostracizing students. Because we, you know, I mean, we just all have that opinion and we're trying to get that shared responsibility, I guess. And so as being able to be more transparent and be like, well, this is my, I, this is my goal of this policy, this is what I want to have happen. Okay, how does that interfere with what I see as an issue with maybe student rights? Like, so how do you compromise, how do we balance it to make it best for everybody? Instead of one side or the other? I think that helps with policies created, right?
Yeah, one, one of the issues that I always have with the board and always have is that there's two, there's two opportunities to make changes, right? That's it, there's the first reading and there's the second reading. And that does not give a lot of time for a lot of good, healthy conversation, right? I mean, it just doesn't, there's, there's very little back and forth. Now, because we meet once a month, even that requires, that means at the fastest, it's gonna be two. So it's a slow process, it's, it's, it's the slow sausage making of fluctuations that we're talking about, right? But it would be nice if we could have, like, I don't know whether it's a work session or what on some of these, maybe even before the first reading, where we could do that. We do have a, um, a policy committee. But honestly, that is, if, if everybody was used to, almost is nobody used, and when it does get used, it's mainly about the syntax. Let's make sure we're in the syntax out before the show's up, it's not really about the elite of the.
Hey, I think one of those three, yeah, reenacting the policy committee, a third reading or a work session where there's no pressure to vote and which facilitates actual conversation. Not for every policy, but for, hopefully we don't have more contentious policies, but for the ones in the past that.
We wouldn't.
Like, that seems like it would.
It works.
Behave us, would behave the schools, would allow the public more opportunity to give input. And that seems like simple structural change, or maybe, I don't know.
Well, but if I could offer something, yeah, I think I had conversations with these, with you guys individually between meetings about particular policy items. And that's always welcome. You know, it doesn't have to just be the any time when you share your thoughts on what should or shouldn't be included in a policy. So at the first reading, you look at that policy and go, this has gotta be added, or this, we're getting this wrong. And you give me that feedback when we're asked, I can get that in the draft that goes in the board packet, the whole board sees it. So I can really handle more of a less discussion based on what you share with me in, in between the meetings. Um, that's, that's one viable avenue to getting that down without having to have a public meeting with all the board members and open records with all seven members on a email. Was my idea? I know, yeah, my, my door's open for that, so, um, more of that, I would appreciate that. Yeah, we'll get a policy passed.
Yeah, there's some. We need content. And it wouldn't allow three readings, like the, the one with the, uh, student orientation or parent orientation. That was like a two reading deal, two and done, because we just didn't have time. Now, that's not to say we couldn't have had something made work through, right? We could have said, look, we want a special meeting on this and discuss it more, I'd love to do that. The other thing we have done in the past with, like, for example, C K A, and we've done a couple others, but they're not coming online right now, is we've had listening sessions, right? We'll just say, look, we're not gonna just have any discussions of board members as it were, we're just going with. Those are all, all the things that we can do, hopefully don't facilitate what we're talking about. And I, as the chair, I'll open anything that you guys want, want to do.
I think, I also really like the idea of listening sessions and brings me back to something Mike said of people feeling like they have to stick their neck out, and is there a way, can we make it so the public doesn't feel like they have to stick their neck out to be involved?
God, people come and talk about.
Or, yeah, or to speak to all of us, just in terms of transparency of, like, I would love if our meetings were recorded and online, like the commissioners and the city council, you know? I don't know if there needs to be a little like, I don't know. How do you give a public talk, just for people who are like, that's probably something that people will be like, I have opinions, but I would not have a horrible board, rupture works. Of just what are little things we can do to like keep increasing that transparency, you know? The public will take it or leave it, yeah, but making it known that we do value input and we're trying to be transparent. And can we build some bridges?
I think we have the public deal of, of the reportings on the January.
Yeah.
To discuss, um, in terms of that, what, what if we have a, you know, I, this would be fine with me if we had a submission for on the website, decision one con- contacted board. There's a, you don't even need to use or. A lot of form right here and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a general suggestion box on there.
Okay.
Rarely have ever used. They have emails or they have phones, you know?
I think I actually agree with that.
Yeah.
One of the things that others had looked at. Oh, yeah. Is, uh, there are some organizational decisions and operational decisions, right? And, and, and sometimes I, I think that, uh, you know, as a board, we're, we're, we're organizations. We'll make the most decision, that's what we're here to do. But in saying that, sometimes I think we should, should use our, our people a little bit harder. And, and that's just cherish and his admin team and those guys and, and, and being willing to, to give a direction and say to you guys, bring us.
Exactly, that's what we're doing with this, uh, this policy, which has got some ones later this month. That was directed on December tenth, and that's what Thursday our board is gonna do is collaborate around draft, our meeting first of all.
So I think, you know, when we talk about some of the stuff that's been brought up, if, if instead of depending on, on all of us to do all of the taking and cook the ideas and stuff, use our professional people that are trained to do that. And then if we have things we need to change on some of those things, then we'll, we'll, we can work more on and have a discussion and something working on. That's what I think, I'm just saying, that, that's a good thing that you guys are running that one. And see what shakes out, I mean, it's, it's nothing, nothing's great, disagree.
It's sort of just so often where it was held as typical model for selling drafts policy. They go, so our admin team, when most of the first Thursday of the month, we have had a meeting, if there's any policies that we need to post for first reading at the upcoming board meeting, we all look at those drafts and take input and mark it out. Then that, that review draft is what we'll see. Shouldn't see any policies for first reading that our admin team has put there. Um, exactly for that reason, really, the professional people is, they have a better idea of how it's gonna work operationally.
I have a full list of other things.
These things over here.
If you went through your list and I'll go through my list.
Um, one, I think, and I need to learn more about what we're doing, and I'll follow up with you about that. But drugs, substance abuse, I don't think that should be discussed tonight, but I think it can be great sometimes. You're able to have a meaningful work session of just discussing only what is the problem? Who is it impacting, what is being done, and is what being done effective? Yeah, I almost think that's so big a topic that it's worth having a work session for, having data on. Um, and making it a work session, not a vote on renewing or not renewing a new set of policy. Uh, teacher retention and recruitment seems essential. And then what else? One thought was also acknowledging, I absolutely think we should celebrate our successes and our success in that number of failures by a massive amount, um, and I think we need to know what our weaknesses are. And so, and maybe that falls into teacher retention, so just understanding, is there a problem? Like, that is what I've heard campaigning, but, uh, I don't wanna go off what people on the streets told me. How are we retaining teachers and staff, are our teachers and staff happy? Is there a problem and if there is, um, what can we do about it? Uh, so, those were kind of key things on my list.
I think, I think it's good to continue to revisit those. We've, we've had sessions, not work sessions, but we definitely had board sessions on all three of those. And I think now that, you know, we have a lead word with, with Dylan and Kathy on, where we can, we can actually continue those discussions. But just, just so you know, we have had kind of those deeper level discussions on all of us. Um, but they're not one and done things, you know, that can be discussed. Eileen, you're just dying to tell us what you have on there.
I didn't reveal it. Jared, and I know you're dying to hear.
I am, I break them all.
Well, here, here's the interesting thing, I found our retreat notes from one twenty three, twenty three. Number one, substance abuse intervention. So I would, you know, echo, um, what Mara said, you know, we talked about, um, the implementation of random student drug testing. It's pages one, the three parts, we had a great presentation from Deidre about the curriculum elements that we currently have in place for prevention and education. We never talked about those as board and said, gosh, is there more we can do, are there different things we can do, who's doing what else? So I would love more follow up on that. And then we also never really, um, touched back on, um, intervention. And this one has a lot of sticky little figures, cost, who, what, where, how. I've had some interesting meetings with some, um, therapy providers in town. And I think there's a lot of interest in the community for collaborative work to try to establish work-study programs, to try to establish group therapy programs, things that would actually help, um, students who are dealing with substance use and abuse. So I think, as you said, you know, it's a big conversation, it's a dynamic one, and I think we should keep carrying on that. Um, and then that kind of is a little segue into something that I've been talking about a little bit with Karen. I'm gonna actually segue to you to explain some of this. But we were, um, talking this last month, just about our process of stipulated agreements. Cause I was kind of struck when it became apparent that, um, Fremont County School District one is the only school district in the state that expels students after a first offense. Or, for example, a lot of our friends who drank a little bit after a trip to Oklahoma, fans move on. And I, I'm beautiful at the meeting. So we had a conversation to clarify that, and I would be interested in talking about our stipulated meeting process. And if there are ways to improve that, so that ties in again with all of our substance use and abuse. Ties in with, you know, our interventions, it's all one big. I think I was trying to pick them like, one big challenge, but sorry, I don't know.
And I think of utmost concern to parents, drug and substance use, of not just, are they using it or not, are they getting help, are they safe in school? I mean, I think if there's, like, number one, safety, number two is teaching things.
This will react.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is a tough one for a couple of reasons. Now, the, the school district is asked to do a lot of things, and a lot of things that are not connected in any way to any of the standards that we have as a school district and as, as a state. Um, that has become a more important thing for school districts, mental health, in particular, interventions for substance and drug abuse. Um, is that really in the school district's wheelhouse? When we're contracting to the point where we're talking about reducing staff, can we have the capability to do that? And that's part of the reason I was glad to have Travis start this conversation like this. I believe there could be some intervention elements, the things that we could do, will we have the funding to offer positions? Will we find the right professionals to do that while we still have the ten content areas? While we still have the ten content areas and standards of which we have students who pretitle this, right? That's that balancing act that Travis was talking about. Could we do it? Are we really hitting the ground and recruiting the right people to put sure? But what's the trade off in terms of other areas? Um, in, in experience the last couple of years trying to find do, to do that kind of work has been tough. When we issue requests for proposals for therapeutic counseling or within Project Awire, we try to find. Community partners to provide mental health and substance abuse counseling and tough. And find a provider and find a provider who can work with the confines of the public school system and not be just a freelance. I do my own thing and pay. So, do I want kids to be solo? Yes, so they can learn at high levels, yes, I, I think that's super important. Do I want them to be healthy? Yes. But if that's where the priority is, my concern is, not is that important or not. Whatever the cost will be, what will it be affecting in other areas where we know that. Um, mandates and things like that, we'll have to, to work with resources, what's the term about?
When we, excuse me. When we first started discussing the drug testing policy. I remember sitting in this room, I was mad. And we talked about the drug testing policy being one, one aspect of. The fight against substance use. Absolutely, we even talked about, you know, maybe now they just want to exercise or some other field. I agree with Mike, is this really a school issue? To me, it's a statewide partner issue, I mean, the legislature from. Our, um, service providers from the nation one. Yeah, but I mean, I'm just kind of shrinking it down here, we talked about vape shop, you know, like on Main Street. It, it takes a village to conquer this. I just, I agree, I don't wanna sacrifice. School is really poor, I mean, that other stuff is very important, but I think there's gotta be a bigger discussion. The drug testing piece is one piece.
And I wouldn't foresee us providing those interventions. I would say as partnering with public entities that are, can. Provide those services to our kids, because we're identifying our kids. We have a group of kids who are identifying themselves by coming to school. Under an influence and we're sending them away for six weeks. And getting them unengaged with school, which is their safe places where we want them. And I guess my soapbox is, like, I think if you're expelling a kid, it should be extremely egregious behavior. Like, you, we can't educate you, so we are, so we are expelling you. And so I, I'm just struggle with that balance of. How many kids we're expelling? I've been at my current district for seven years and we've had three kids be expelled. In the three years I've been there, and I can tell you, we have the same issues there that we do here, and we've expelled fifty-five in three years.
I think, though, is it fair to say that this is a semantic issue? Right? I mean, our expulsion really becomes a suspension. Right? We think of it, I mean, we say the word expulsion, but once you go through the stipulated agreement, it becomes a. How, how many weeks suspension and tenths? It's like a ten days suspension.
No, it's ten less thirty, or ten less twenties, it's really thirty school days.
Well, it's ten out of school and land twenty in school.
And part of it's replacement, which is another thing. What happens with the ultimate replacement program? Part of it is a drug education component. If you're there because of a drug or substance issue, you will get that education as part of what you work on at ABD. With this dedicated staff on there that walks through. Uh, and then you work on your classroom, same curriculum that you learned while in prior to your incident, you're still working through that communication as a teacher. So you're not out free range for any period of time other than the ten days of suspension. Um, then you're back brought in and that hopefully facilitates your transition back into their school that twenty-four hours has been. I, I, I mean, I'm not saying it's the perfect system, but I don't think. Kids are out there for six weeks and doing nothing and at work, just hands off, hopefully they come back to school. I, I think that's.
When ten days of missing classes. Yeah, I mean, for a student who's like a B or C student, that's the difference between passing a class or failing a class, it may well when it happens. Um, in my class, we just did a missing ten days, I don't know what's. Once, but ten days is a lot, that's two weeks, um, and for students who rely on, there are a lot of students who their. Stable source of food during the school year is school lunch or school breakfast, and so what? And it's, it's not our job to feed every student. We can't fix all the problems in the world, but we have a student who's using drugs. And then we take away a stable food source, and then we put them in a scenario where they're being bummed down a letter grade. Potentially failing a course is, I don't know, in my head, I'm like, that makes me wanna think they want to turn them more drugs. As a coping mechanism rather than supporting them towards. And I don't know, that's my, that's my stance in someone who doesn't use drugs and has never been in that scenario, but.
I don't think grades are really motivating.
Oh, no.
So graduating from high school is.
I would disagree.
Yeah, most of the people that had problems in the early, their biggest things were just with that.
No.
But if you're so low that, that, if you're not down so low that there's no points, and you feel like you can't catch up, I think that's the. It's easy to check out when you've got fifty percent of the class for a year of the cusp of passing. I think it's. Bringe.
And I think we have kids, a lot of our kids make stupid choices a lot of the times, and so it's like their safety is in. When they're still adolescents that we can provide intervention, their consequences while holding them accountable to keeping them engaged. And I just, I think that we can do that better, in my opinion, and I would love to hear from parents whose kids. Who've gone through this and had to beg their kids to come back to school because they didn't want to. They could feel thrown away, they feel like nobody cares, they don't feel like the school cares. Like, I think we should get some firsthand information, because we sent numerous kids through this program and say, how did it help you or did it help you? What could have you done better? What could have been different? And I think, um, I just think that there's a lot more, because these are kids who are identifying, we're talking about mental health issues. Somebody who's struggling with depression, they started vaping, they're getting themselves in, you know, and I think. The substances they're using now, it's not like in the olden days when it's like alcohol takes ten years for your brain to change. If you're not predisposed to addiction, you're dealing with substances that are changing your brain much faster.
That's for sure.
And it's, and they're, so they're not getting that window of like, oh, I've made some like choice of now, I may cuddle and maybe stop this. It's like, no, they're, they're really changing very rapidly.
I certainly, I, I'm certainly open to how can we improve it to make it better, we're always moving with that. I also think we need to look at the other side of the coin too, which is. The accountability side is really important, particularly to kids that are watching this happen. And watching the fact that this, and then using substances and saying, nothing happened to them. There was no, there was no consequence for this kid. I'm gonna, I'm gonna smoke pot tomorrow, this, who cares?
Yeah.
I think the, the deterrent factor is real, and I think we also needed to consider that when we're talking about this.
So our number is going down, stipulated pretty much, but I don't.
I was there, the highest tier was, so, um, I would work right there, still, so.
And then we had, now we're like more alcohol.
Right, so, I don't know, maybe you can go along with that.
They, and they, they are getting charged, so they get on probation, they do get cited, they get six months probation. They have to be in school, they're getting EAs, they have to, you know, they have. I used to sign this before the version with numerous kids, so I know what they're exactly, what they're getting. They're in trouble for six months, so it's not like there, it's, there, nothing's happening to them.
How many of those things were visible to the kids?
Oh, you know, all of them. That's going on, it goes on probation, it goes on, uh, very well there.
Yeah, I think there's, there's two po- two different things I think to, to understand, the potential action items or areas to focus on. All these student degrees plus the, the present. Consequences for these types of interactions, and the other is, how does Fremont one fit into an overall community or statewide approach to. Moving adding drug and substance use and intervening when the students got themselves involved in a certain activity? We had that community meeting last April, invited multiple agencies and community votes to that meeting. And had a great time discussing the nature of the issues, and there was no fault went wrong.
Yeah, and there's no, it's just.
Nothing, not even a problem.
Is that, is that the one of the. Mirror center?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and then just.
Right, because police the lead agency, that's the physical prevention, the school district is, health. There's no organizational structure, so. Well, I do my little part of the probation, and I do my part of the counseling.
And I'm not saying, I think there is a point of the stipulated order, just don't agree with them all at first, but, you know, I just don't think. I think that there needs to be a process, and it needs to be a graduated sanction like we developed for, that if you get caught with a positive UA. We looked at that as an intervention and how can we help and how can we, like, help to intervene from a positive way. I'm not for holding them accountable, I don't wanna knock them down. I just think we could do that.
Well, I was, I was, is the way you hold them accountable, keeping them, is it helping others? Do we have data on that or are we just going off of a hunch? We think that doing this will help them, and so maybe like. It sounds like you're also asking for, have you been following these students with these parents?
Yeah.
There's, there's still drug use, substance use in schools. We've not figured it.
Yeah.
We're probably never fully fix it, but is there data to show that what we're doing is actually.
Yeah.
Only created creating new and different problems.
Yeah, well, and it's like any of the kids who were using to the point of losing consciousness and then they're. In a school setting, what are, what was their ultimate goal? Were they trying to take their own mind? What did we do to intervene? Didn't, you know, like, was that helpful? Was it not helpful? Well, I'm sure the parents were like, they would like my kid at school. So I know where they go, you know, they, I just think it would be good information to talk to the parents who'd be willing to come back and then. Speak to us, and I know it's confidential. Definitely, it's us. But then that's another thing too with this, it's like, I'd like to go back and look at kids, like, specific kids and say, where are they at that we can't do that anymore?
Yeah, well, some of that information, I mean, I, I was pleasantly, I was happy to report at the December meeting about the students. We've been in stipulated for the past three years, this fifty-five students, eighty percent of them graduate or remain enrolled. So it's not really, and that's roughly about our graduate graduation rate as a district. Um, which I think is positive, um, but still thirteen percent dropout, seven percent transfers to older students. Um, that's, we'd always like fewer dropouts, transfers are a lot of them, and a lot of the family. Uh, but that's for those that have the stipulated, those that don't, you're way more likely to drop out, it was an eight, didn't take the stipulated, five dropped out. Which is really, okay. Uh, we, we know what happens every kid, because they're all stipulated. And is it the perfect, ten plus twenties, that the perfect solution for drug violence offenses? Um, even sports, a lot of that, and if there's a better way to do it, I think. What they want to use about right now is, are we gonna change whole stream this school year? Yeah, there's.
I think this is, yeah, nice to do a discussion, and it needs to be very intentional and. And I do think a little bit of that change, as the county used to have the DRC program, that they've gotten very. Secured with, and there was a lot of good success rate with the DRC program, and so I was trying to do a lot on my own, is that being active? Is it worth what we're doing or can, how would it be that in a different way?
So what other priorities we've got? No, that's good, that's good to get them out.
Being transparent, yeah, priority on me.
That's good, that's good. What are the priorities? What do you think is a good, wanna tackle? Oh, we're getting cell phones, right? That's kinda already the ones. That's a good one.
You guys all said something.
Yeah. Positivity, drug substance abuse, teacher retention.
Yeah.
Identifying this is safety, stipulated agreements.
Teacher retention. And what's hard, I think, I know we talked about, this the year before we got information why staff left. Talked about it last year, so truly figure out, it was an extra, are two senior days.
Yeah, but I have those, it's really difficult to se- to discuss in a public meeting.
Yeah.
It's so, it's so easy to get back together and file, which we'll talk about.
Yeah, so just trying to figure out which to submit that.
Well, I mean, is there a way, like, is there a way to get feedback more broad? We only have X number. Of staff leave, like, is that the best place to look for feedback when people know it won't be anonymous? Or like, even if it's anonymous, people can guess who wrote it? Is there value in having a broader check in with. Staff and teachers at schools of, how are you doing and trying to identify trends? Cause I think the bigger the number, you're always gonna get three people who perhaps some personal vendetta they're gonna complain about, but. When you get like, oh, twenty people, I think that's the value of if you can reach more people with some sort of feedback survey. You can pick up on what are the bigger trends, you can ensure anonymity, so people actually respond in a better capacity. And you can pick up on what are the actual trends and patterns versus what are the loud complaints? Which maybe we need to pay attention to, or maybe we can toss aside, and.
So we've done that a couple of ways. I really like how Mike does the exit interviews and disseminates information, because what he does is he takes them all. And distills them in things, and then Fremont provides us with things so that we can't really boil it and do a single.
Nice.
And then if we want to as a group drill farther in, we can do that in the end with Fondo.
Uh-huh.
Um, which, which I think has worked pretty well. Um, then in terms of getting the surveys for the teachers, I don't know, we last, we did that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, WSB.
Yeah, and we've done it two ways, either directly through WSB, so that teachers feel that's all anonymous. Or we've set it up, um, when Brett was, was chair, it went directly to him.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think WSB probably worked better as a cost, um, but not an exorbitant cost, it wasn't very expensive to have. Um, and that worked out really well. So, yes, we, we continue to do those kinds of. Retention, climate survey.
Were changes made, given the feedback either from exit surveys or that survey two years ago? Like, were there actionable items?
Absolutely, you know, a lot of it was, uh, influenced, uh, ones, values for supervisors. Um, a lot of comments were very positive, you know, most people, I was insured, looking at these percentages right here from last year's exit survey. Uh, the vast majority, sixty to seventy percent of people felt like they were well supported by district and school leadership. Um, so that, that to me is positive, they had a lot of different specific areas of concern. But most of the time, that wasn't the reason we, the district was, because of economic factors, my family, my spouse got a job somewhere else, or. Um, there's a whole multitude of reasons. Um, so it's, it's tough to distill until, this is what we need to do as a district to keep you here. Because there's situations or something.
Yeah.
No, I can't, I miss purchase for home, and I just have. Quadrants. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody could, trying to think of an example, we can't track somebody.
Ideally, we, you know, we get a very consistent message of, this is the policy that's made me laugh.
Yeah.
Right? We just haven't never seen that, or at least once.
It seems, it seems like great feedback, if there's no specific.
Right.
On one of them, it's just like, but.
But it does make it difficult to figure out what change need to be made to, to do better for.
So, we did hear some comments about the eight last three exit surveys. Uh, but, you know, again, we raised the base significantly, from the most certified classified. Uh, but, you know, again, we raised the base significantly on the most certified classified. I think the people who lack, have actually been seen that, so. Can we just, if everybody, I don't know.
That's what is a goal, I mean, for your, well. Do as much as we can for staff, the change that came in for health insurance last year, yeah, we've got some listeners. But I think in the long run, it's gonna benefit the district. Great, because our, the only voice here, our leadership, we have a sense of ability. Now we've done what a lot of people have asked, we're. Eating, they're already fed. I wrote down a possible goal. To go south next couple of years. But I said, did, did a pretty substantial amount of this last year, I would. Like to make that a priority, but, okay, discussed earlier, it's all about barriers, and why is it so big? What can we do to reach that goal, but also not affect student outcomes, stress?
So make it out of.
If I could, I wouldn't be here.
Uh, I did appreciate your breakdown of the pay, pay for insurance too, so I think we all knew what that was.
Alright, so what else do we need to get out of, I mean, I think we've had great discussions. We've got some great topics that we can focus on, I mean, I think.
I like that, yeah, top ten percent of pay, I, that was the most actionable, specific. Hopefully achievable and goals, you know, well, not if we made it or not.
You know, I do think that was good, um, it's balanced against the fact that he quoted Hillary Clinton earlier about three takes of Hillary, so I mean.
Oh, right, I gotta say, I gotta say it, I am finally, I really think, yeah. Oh, Tom, I wanna say it, okay. You mean, I respect people's political views and stuff, though. Like, you don't want to build a.
I just do it in case, I just do it. Okay, top ten salary, I think we should probably.
Ten list.
We should probably.
Hold Travis on that in the paper, that would.
No, no.
I did write it down.
Well, I do like that, I mean, that, that's a good, it, it's a good conversation to have, right, because when we do talk about the pie. And if we're gonna widen that section.
Yep.
What else is traditional shift, so, it's a tough session, that's for sure. Um, I like the goal of getting more, I, I like that idea, the goal of, of taking success stories. And getting those after, I don't know, as a goal. Um, and then of course, these others, goals could just be bringing them up to game, that's for sure. Uh, and then, they're priorities to people, we should probably discuss a more, get a, you know, more follow up, I say. Not a little one, you. Anything else for the audience? No, Travis?
So the, the list from twenty three, standards based learning assessment and instructional time, that was like the third biggest thing, which I think that's kind of.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah.
District communications, and this was interschool communication specifically, so. Um, and I think you've actually done a really nice job as our superintendent. To kind of start breaking down a little silencer structure that I think was more. Evident, maybe, three years ago, right, before the pandemic.
I think it's important, there, maybe there used to be your students, or they are now, or they're going. All the same way.
Yep.
Then there was bullying, data capture and reporting. Cell phones and classrooms. Um. And then there was budget decision making, policy revisions, and the superintendent search, check. And, oh, about this, how do you establish board goals, carry them out and measure success? No one, district climate improvement, and then completion of phase one of the district report card. And then the other thing that got added on by admin that, like, was a chain of command for dealing with complaints. Um, and management, because I think that was in the middle of just some really tricky communications. Issues where people were calling Jared at night, trying to get him to solve all the, all the district's problems.
Mar, had, had we talked about chain command stuff a year or two?
My mom, no, I, no, I'm not gonna go with you.
Okay, so as a board, what, what happens is, what, what admin, admin requests us to do is basically go to the, the next level up. From where the problem is, that's right, so when we as a board member, we can solve the problems, all we can do is direct them to that place. So usually it's gonna be either a teacher or a professor, and then they can follow the chain as well. The other thing we can do is make them aware of policies that are, that concern things like, uh, you know. Replace the formulation complaint process, um, you know, if, if Mr. Newan Orton is not solving the problem. Um, and you don't feel like going directly to Mike is going to, to solve it, here's the form of the policy. That allows you to, to watch it. So, um, so those are the two things I think that we can, uh, what we do wanna avoid is.
Well, the basic thing is, is like for your employees and staff and that sort of thing, is if they, if they start jumping hoops on stuff. And they end up making themselves a pile, and that's how you, trouble. So, so if it's a staff member that causes, they have, they have a problem, they need to take that to their direct supervisor. And then follow that chain command up to Mr. Harris and then over to the, to us.
And then if they have a problem with their supervisor, skip, say your teacher, you have a problem with your principal, you just forget the, my.
Yep.
And I've had, I've had staff members come and talk to me, and sometimes what I'll say, particularly if it's like a group, I've had a group of people come and talk to me. For example, I'd say, look, I am happy to go talk to Mike about this, either with you or on your behalf, you know. But you need to understand that as soon as I do that, the anonymity likely goes out the window, and are you? Okay, with the fact that what I'm ready to all discuss is. So far, in all of it, I think one case, it has been, nah, we'll, we'll work through methods. You know, we'll work through it some of the more, I'll get back to you on this, and then, so. Uh, you know, what I, what I don't do is yell. The problems, checks.
Part of that is because they're, like, legally there are different steps that need to happen, like, if we're gonna have a hearing. But a board member has already received information and tried to intervene somehow, you can skip that step, now the board isn't gonna be there. And if you cancel the venue of the hearing, and then what is it, the office of administrative hearings, and then employers, you can give the card, and of course. You know, with good intentions, but give this around the process.
That's one of the reasons it always bothers me, because I'm, I'm, I'm there with this, but when teachers do come to me. It's like, effectively, I have just taken myself out of the ability to sit on some kind of hearing. Right, because just by having that meeting, I've already become out of the store. What else, since we're here and we're in a formal setting, um, emails, has anyone talked to you about email loading?
Oh, no.
So.
Don't read the answer.
From my computer away.
No, and, so, so open the meeting laws, if, if there are more than four trustees in the room, it has to be.
Yep, they're, they're all, oh, okay, not just, it can't be like I'm back for, then you got shame.
If, if one of the lawsuits that has happened and says, why is it the board like ours, said, okay, I'm gonna vote yes on this, Art, how do you vote?
Oh, God.
How do you vote, how do you vote, now we formed a core, but it's outside of.
And the same if I invite Mike and you and Karen over for dinner at my house and leave out Scott, Taylor and Ali.
Actually, that's okay as long as you don't discuss district business, there's nothing that prevents that, but you can't discuss.
We can be friends, but we can't.
Right, right, and, and that actually, there's a, there's a really, real real situation with that is, like, when we travel to the college.
Oh, yeah.
We have to be careful about not discussing policy as a group in those settings.
Yep, I'm going to Jeffrey City next.
Right, yeah, that's why, as we went over, I was trying to be careful about not engaging policy decisions, because we.
Yep. Um. I'm trying to remember one question, email them to your hall, pet you up and ask them.
I mean, unless anyone else has anything else you wanna. Cover tonight, I appreciate everyone, and I had a cold. It's not that cold yet.
My last question.
You can make a motion.
There are other things that admin would add, or do you know of any other? Issues or barriers?
They have seen me actually. Anytime you think about it, it's at a school, you come to the schools.
You're like, yeah, absolutely, okay.
I would love to see. Now, Mike, it'll be adjusted, because one's bottom half, but.
That was, that was many years ago.
I think that's, that's a big one. That's where the magic happens, this field that we work in, so when you're there and you're keying up. Learning more about what's happening to the students in the classroom, on site, that just gets, ends the world's focus, you can do that.
Administrative details for minors' future plans, January twenty first, or regular orbit. February second, third, WSB legislative forum, do we need to let Carol know? Let Carol know if we have some rooms reserved, we just don't know how much interest there is, we can prove that, or.
Just being hot.
Rooms as in, no, no, okay.
Well, I think it's a Sunday night, Monday, the kids are in class.
Yeah, it is Sunday night. Uh, February fourth, special board meeting out at Jeffrey City. Um, so it's a little preliminary, but usually we just meet here, I think. Hmm, it's gotta be before five, right, at this time of year, probably.
It was only, it's now here. Fifty minutes dressing.
Bringing the crash out looking.
February eighteen, regular board meeting.
Wait, which vehicle were you in?
You was on that.
He did a great note, right?
We go back to September fourth, so who are we taking out with, we're, we're having parents come with students who are interested in school next year? So are we gonna have?
So we're.
Teachers assessing.
We're hoping that, uh, anybody who's interested in oral education will be there. That's what that letter says, that we'll be going out, and a lot of this will, will be attention, we'll get that letter out to folks and say. You know, what's the level of interest, do you have children, old girl, the families in this, in this area that? Would like to go to Jeffrey City, or what the interest is, or if things are sufficient interest, we could open that school again for. Just that one.
What's, what's happening for people?
Um, I think we'll just probably wanna talk about the enrollment process, I don't know if that, that wants to, we don't have enrollment. Um. Ready yet, probably, I think it will be later in February, when we start that, the online registration, by twenty five, I guess.
And we're not gonna do any action items or anything like that in the board meeting, it's, it's, I think it's more of a just a show of. Support for the community out there, so if someone can't make it, you know, um, of the cabinet yet, like.
Nope.
Okay, um, so if you can't make it for whatever reason, that's fine, but, it'd be nice to have at least a few board members up there just to show us.
And they may have questions about it, it's always nice.
Just then check the box for the state school board, about having a meeting.
Yes, I think this is, this is one of the major components, yeah, that, that was.
Are we good? Are there a motion to adjourn, we need a motion to adjourn, I can just adjourn, can I? What's that? I do. Can I get a, can I get a motion to adjourn? Alright, all papers?
Alright.
Hi, any opposed? One of these times I'm gonna get someone that wants to.
Of someone.
Yeah, right.